Good evening, folks. Welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, April 22nd, 2024. Time is six o'clock, thereabouts. We're in the Select Board Conference Room at Town Hall. This meeting is being conducted in hybrid fashion and is being recorded. If anyone else is recording the meeting, that's great. Let Jason know. In attendance tonight is myself, Doug Moglen, Vice Chairman Jason Perone, Diane Gale Clerk, Acting C A O Robert Landis, and Assistant C A O Nadine Signoni, and Secretary Lisa Anderson is in the other room. Can we start with the Pledge of Allegiance? Mr. McMahon, would you like to lead us in the pledge tonight? Any takers?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, where liberty and justice are.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll start off with public comments. Anybody has anything that they'd like to address to the Select Board that's not on the now is your opportunity. As we get to any other items that are on the agenda that people may have comments about, we'll take them at that time. Is there anyone in the audience that has any public comments that they'd like to address to the Select Board? Not all at once. Seeing none. Anyone on Zoom? I want to see everybody, let's see. I don't see any hands. I think we're in good shape. Okay. So why don't we move right into the interview portion of our program tonight? So the first candidate we're tonight is Holly Hebda, and this is for the position of Town Clerk. How are you this evening?
Good, how are you?
Do you know everyone?
Yes, I do. Looking around the room.
Okay. So we have a few questions for you. And at the end, we'll give you ample time and opportunity to ask any questions of us
Okay.
that you may have or any statements that you wish to make. Fair enough?
Sounds good. Ready.
Okay. You want to go left to right this time?
It's fine, sure. Welcome. Thank you. Easy questions, I hope. Describe how you organize and manage several tasks simultaneously. Okay, so right now, we've got three offices in one. So I use my calendar on a daily basis to put down tasks and how and when the due dates are for all of those. We also use a system of a whiteboard for like last day to register to vote when the elections are like that type of thing. I'd say the calendar is definitely the best.
Please tell us about any technology you've implemented in your current or past roles that has improved services or processes.
Well, we can just use, right now, we just upgraded to the new municipal system in the fall. It was a little bit of a learning curve to get used to, but now that we're in there, we're actually finding that there's benefits to like the transfer station stickers and easier process to use. And then also, like when we have like Southwick LLC, the American Inn, like when we're taking in their payments where they have like forty to fifty payments at a time, we can now take one check and apply it all in one transaction versus the old system where we had to do it one at a time. So we're still learning, but it went smoothly, I thought, because that was a little thing that we were nervous about this fall.
Please describe your approach to goal setting for staff and for yourself.
Okay, so I think it's important to always set objectives and opportunities for yourself to work towards throughout, whether it be a year or sixty days. I usually try to set my objectives and try to check in with, you know, my manager, my boss frequently to make sure that I'm meeting those objectives. And if I'm not meeting those objectives, I try to make sure that we come up with an action plan as to how we can achieve, or I can make sure that I achieve those goals. As far as personnel goes, I've had an opportunity at Honda. I was a subject matter expert. So I actually redesigned their whole training system because we had a lot of turnover in the department. So what I was able to do is I started interviewing after we did like our two-week training process and really getting feedback from the employees as to what they needed and what would help them best in their role. And that was a really game changer because not everybody is fit to one model. Some people want like hands-on learning, other people learn by doing it themselves and reading directions. So just really understanding what their learning style is to make sure you're helping them meet their goals and objectives. And of course, positive reinforcement is always good as well.
Please tell us about any municipal projects that you have managed. Does anything stand out to you from the learning experiences you gained through managing those projects?
Yeah, since I've been in town government, because of course I came from a corporate background. One project that we started on this past fall was our precincts for our voting downstairs. We've had a lot of new streets that have come in, so we had to integrate all the new streets. We had to check with like the D B W, other departments, making sure we're not missing any streets. Because of course, when new residents show up to the town hall and they're going to vote, if their street name isn't there, they get very confused as to what precinct they can't do. So I kind of spearheaded that project. I had a couple other hats on my belt, as Michelle used to call it, with a treasure collector side, so I was able to delegate that to one of our associates to complete the project. But I definitely had, you know, I had her see it through to the end. And we used it this past election, and it was very successful. So that was nice.
Can you describe your approach to recording and maintaining a large amount of data?
Yes, so the first thing that we have is we have several things, especially on the clerk's side. We track marriage certificates, birth certificates, and then of course, death certificates. So we keep track of an Excel spreadsheet. We have to have them all filed in the back. And then, of course, our favorite, which has come in the last few years, is mail-in voting. I've been able to track all the cards that have come in. We've been able to enter them into the state computer system. And then it's also organization when you start to get data that large, because there's roughly a little under a thousand people that we dealt with for the mail-in voting. So keeping track of who wants, you know, like our local election, who wants the state primary in November. There's a lot of organization and thought process that's gone into that for this year to make sure that we're successful and not missing any ballots for anybody that wanted one.
Describe an instance when your sense of ethics and integrity were tested.
I like to think I'm a pretty ethical person. Realistically, I'm kind of neutral when it comes to most things. If it's something I'm very positive about and I feel passionate about, I'll definitely voice my opinion, but I feel as though on a day-to-day basis, I look at everything on both sides of the coin. Luckily, I haven't really had to deal with anything that was unethical here that we've had to deal with. If I was faced with an unethical situation, I think it would be something that I would have to report to like my manager or to the head supervisor, especially if something that was unethical and shouldn't be going on.
Can you describe what elections you were involved with? What tasks you were assigned before, during, and following the elections, and how you managed those?
Sure, so last year, after Jess had left, I had helped Michelle set up with the early voting information. This past election was the most, I'd say, experience that I got. All elections since I've been here, the assistant has been responsible for setting up the elections, putting up signs around the building, making sure, you know, people know where to go, where to vote, putting up the proper signage, that's required by state laws. And then also making sure the precincts are all set for so that people know like where to go when they're labeled down there in the Council of Aging. I have done our voting books. We typically highlight our inactives. And then after the the election is done at the end of the night, then of course, you have to put everything away. And then the following day, we have to then key into the state computer system who voted, whether it be, yeah, town meeting will work the same like the following day. We do that. So I've gotten a big spectrum. This last one was really great too, because I also got to work the early voting. We're here on Saturdays as well. So I got a lot of experience with that.
Are you comfortable with the responsibilities that are outlined in the job description and the expectations in this role? And what do you think will be the most challenging part of this job for you?
So I feel as though the job is a big role. I feel as though for me, working alongside Michelle for the past three years, I've gotten a lot of knowledge from her that she's passed on. There is, I'd say, still several areas of opportunity. The first area of opportunity would be is that obviously our offices are now splitting and we're going to need to be hiring staff. So setting the staff goals and objectives of what their responsibilities are going to be, as well as my own. I do know that I do not have the Mass Clerk's title in Massachusetts for passing the exam, so I know that I do have to go to school for three years, and then I know that I do have to take the test. So I'm hoping with the schooling and the training, the portion of the job role that I don't know right now, I would be able to learn that. And then, of course, go to resources if I had questions, such as the state are reaching out directly to our representatives at their Ethics Division, not Ethics, at the Election Division, if I have any election questions, to make sure everything is given accurately.
So have you had a chance to familiarize yourself with the certification that will be required?
I looked through it briefly. Unfortunately, their website doesn't let you get very far until you're actually a member. So once you become the member, then it kind of unlocks the whole website, and then it'll go through what the classes and everything else are that you would have to take. Because I did try to look at their website to see if I could get as much information as possible, but it was limited to actually get like a login from them.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I did the same thing.
I tried. I tried. I really tried.
Please discuss how you please discuss how you have increased communications both internally and externally in past positions.
Okay, so communication is definitely key. Luckily, at Honda, we had a great communication system. Here, even at Town Hall, Michelle's office, we had a great communication system. Like every time, you know, somebody left for lunch, if you're waiting for something to follow up, we always want to make sure that whoever we're serving, whether it be somebody from the town or somebody else knows what to do if they come in. So let's just say, for example, today, we had one where somebody forgot to sign their check. So before somebody went to lunch, we would do that. As far as other communication, you can also send out emails. Let's say you've brought up something and you want it known to everybody. We've also used email as a good form of communication. And I'm sorry, do you want to repeat that question one more time too, to make sure I'm giving you all the information?
Please discuss how you have increased communications both internally and externally in past positions.
I think externally, one thing that we could do on the clerk's side, and this is maybe veering a little bit off, but I have looked at our website. And there's a few areas that I'd like to communicate maybe better or enhance on. In the portion, when I'm looking on the clerk's side, there wasn't really much listed about like marriage intentions and people picking up their marriage licenses. We do happen to get a lot of phone calls that, you know, people are wondering what they need to bring with them, if they need to set up appointment with the clerk's office. So for external customers, I would like to maybe enhance the website a little bit more and give them some more information that way.
And you touched on this a little bit with your Honda training system. Please describe any process improvements that you have developed, including how you identified the need, the steps taken, and including the use of technology in these undertakings. And by the way, we haven't seen these questions beforehand either.
Okay.
Stumble on them, that's why.
No, that's okay. That's okay.
Do you want me to repeat that because I interrupted?
Sure, that's okay.
Describe any process improvements that you have developed, including identifying the need, the steps taken, and including the use of technology in those undertakings.
Yeah, so I guess that does bring us back to where I had a more active role at Honda as hiring people. Most of them at that point in time were temporary positions, trying to see if they could get into long-term technology, or I'm sorry, if they could be employed with us long-term. Technology-wise, most of it was followed up or tracking through emails with the supervisors, because of course, the supervisors were looking for me to be the direct role as to if somebody's getting enough help or not enough help. Because of course, at the end of the day, if somebody wasn't following our plan and needed more assistance, I would kind of take a step back and I would look at the associate and say, okay, so this is our training manual that we outlined. This is what was expected. Usually, we would do like a thirty-day review to start with, and then usually, we'd try to find an area of opportunity within that thirty days. One of the things that we did do wise with okay, I can't think of the word right now. But I did create a template in Word, which was kind of like, not necessarily like a cheat sheet, but like a helpful thing. So if people were on the phone with somebody and they didn't know a policy or procedure, instead of taking the time, being a new associate, not being familiar with how to use their technology, it would kind of have their outlined information right there, so they could kind of go to a quick reference guide, I guess you'd want to call it, just to try to make their job easier, because everybody knows when you're coming in to a brand-new job, there's definitely a lot of responsibility and everything to learn right off the bat. So the easier we can make it for somebody to be successful is what we were looking for in the end.
And as a follow-up, how do you rate your technology skills as far as spreadsheets or documents?
I would say I'm very proficient with that. Right now, we have tons of Excel spreadsheets that we use on the clerk's side on a daily basis. Some of the PowerPoint presentations used to be used at my old job because I'd have to run department meetings. So I'm fluent with that. And of course, all of the systems that we use. Right now, the state is actually coming out with a new vital program. So Bonnie and I have recently been in the process of taking some training. It hasn't rolled out yet. But for the desks, there's going to be a new software system that's going to be coming out very shortly for us.
That's ten.
Yes.
Do you have any questions for us?
I do. What do you guys see as qualities for your next town clerk?
That's a good question.
People who ask good questions. For me, it's a good sense of confidence in your own leadership skills. As you know, you're going to be perhaps hiring some fresh people,
Yeah.
training fresh people. There's going to be a little bit of chaos in getting people physically situated where they're going to end up being. So maintaining your own job plus all of that is going to require a lot of strong leadership and organization. Certainly, people skills with the public in this role is key.
Yeah.
For me.
I had patience high up on my list.
That too.
I do have a lot of patience. You can ask Bonnie.
Sir?
Well, you hit on the key one for me, which is communication is key.
Yeah.
So that, and I like how you, your experience from American Honda. You know, you check in with people after they've come on, see where they are, and if they've got any deficiencies, you know, how you can help them.
Yeah, because sometimes as a boss, you need to look at them and see like, is there something else I can do to help you? Because sometimes you won't know right off the bat as to what they're going to need.
And a people person.
Well, I like to think I'm a people person. I can say that I've been in town my whole life, and I lived in town, and I'm raising my family in town. I like to be involved in our community. I think I saw a few faces when we did Rees Across America. You know, back in the fall, a couple times, I've marched with my kids in the Veterans Day Parade with the Lions Club. So we're not going anywhere. We're here to stay.
Anything else?
Um. No, I guess that's it for right now.
Okay.
Yeah. Good. Unless you guys had anything else for me?
Awesome.
I don't think so. Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, well, thank you.
Great job. And the next candidate is Christina Maye.
Not look it up and have Lisa scare me again. Just, just. Meeting you right in the door.
Yes.
Hi, how are you?
How are you?
Good. You know everyone? Okay, check in. How are you tonight?
Not too bad. How are you?
Great. All right, we have a list of about ten questions or so for you.
Okay.
And we're kind of going to go around and ask the questions, and then we'll give you ample time to ask any questions you have of us. And we'll do our best to answer them as best as we're able.
Okay.
Fair enough?
Sounds good.
Ready? Want to pick up where we left on?
Yep.
Oh, boy, just to keep it interesting.
Yep.
Question number one. Describe how you organize and manage several tasks simultaneously.
So the way that I start with organizing tasks is I make a list. I start, you know, listing everything that I have to do. And then I'll prioritize them by most important to other things that can wait a little while, and then also add deadlines in there too. To make sure that the items that are most important and have the earliest deadlines get taken care of fastest first.
Please tell us about any technology you have implemented in your current or past roles that has improved services or processes.
So a couple years ago, we went through a town-wide meter system upgrade. And that has been a huge asset to the town. It upgraded all the meters that we have in the town. And it also is very beneficial to the consumer in the end, because they can see how much water they use on down to an hourly basis. And it is really beneficial when we have, you know, six-month billing cycles. It's easier to break that down and show them, hey, this is what you use from point A to point B. And, you know, that was a a large project and incorporated many vendors and trying to get all those moving parts to work together to have a successful product in the end. That was a major part of that.
Please describe your approach to goal setting for staff and for yourself.
So when I set a goal, there's obviously an end goal, but I think there are smaller goals to lead up to that end goal. And the best way is to break it down and to start, you know, baby steps steps essentially leading up to the end result. And, you know, regular meetings, you know, with staff to make sure that we're on track to meet our goals and to, you know, accomplish those short-term goals to accomplish a larger long-term goal.
Can you tell us about any municipal projects that you have managed? Does anything stand out to you from the learning experiences you gain through managing these projects?
Probably the large project, and I'll bring it up again, is the meter project that was a very large undertaking. And I incorporated all the data into the billing software. And today, I'm still the administrator of all those, both those programs, as well as the billing software for the utility billing. I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Sure. Absolutely. Can you tell us about any municipal projects that you have managed? Does anything stand out to you from the learning experiences you gain through managing these projects?
Okay, so probably the biggest thing that I learned with that is communication, to make sure you're communicating effectively with all of your vendors. To make sure that they are aware of your common, you know, the common goal, but what pieces are most important that you need from them to make it all work in the end.
Can you describe your approach to recording and maintaining a large amount of data?
So when it comes to large amounts of data, you have to be accurate. You know, precise when it comes to you know, reviewing that data. And you need to do regular checks to make sure that, you know, that information, I mean, the information's only as good as it, you know, is organized and put together and inputted input into wherever, whatever you're doing with it. Data is no good unless there's a rhyme or reason to the way it is organized.
I just want to say to you also, we didn't have these questions beforehand. We each submitted them, but we don't know what they are, so we stumble on them, that's why. Describe an instance when your sense of ethics and integrity were tested.
When I was working in the private sector, I was once offered an amount of money to bend the rules and look the other way and to basically not follow the rules that were set, the company policies. And it, in the end, was not worth my, you know, my morals. It wasn't worth the livelihood of my employer, my livelihood, or the public safety at the time. And I continue to hold myself to a very high moral standard.
Please describe what elections you were involved with and what tasks you signed before, during, and following the elections, and how you managed those tasks.
So in my previous experience in the Town Clerk Treasure Collector's Office, I was involved in the nomination papers, when we receive those back, certifying the nomination, the signatures for the nomination papers. I've been involved in testing of the phoning machines. I have assisted in covering for some poll workers during like lunches and breaks and stuff like that. And also, you know, clean up an organization afterwards.
Can I follow up?
Sure.
That was part-time when you were in the
I was, I was full-time.
It's full-time, okay.
And I also did help when they had staffing shortages in the years after my time there, after I had already transitioned to the D B W office.
Are you comfortable with the responsibilities that are outlined in the job description and the expectations in this role? And what do you think will be the most challenging part of this job for you?
So I am very comfortable with all the things laid out in the job description. Probably, I would say, my most challenging and my most exciting would be that I find the most exciting is the elections, because it's ever-changing right now. There's a lot of election reform out there. There is, the laws are constantly changing. And really, an election is a town clerk's super bowl. That and town meeting, it's really nothing, nothing that gets more exciting. But I'm a very quick learner, and I will give it my all to make sure that, you know, our town succeeds and everything, all the laws are followed.
So as a follow-up, have you familiarized yourself with the certification that will be required? The certification will take some time and personal effort to obtain. How will you be able to work this into your schedule?
So I have looked into the requirements to obtain a certification from the Massachusetts Town Clerks Association. It's based on a point system. So fifty percent of the points comes from the time served in the position and your experience. You know, being involved in the office. Then the other fifty percent is based upon other classes that you take, and then there's, it's a test after that. So once you have enough points, then you can take the test, and then from there, you get your certification. And I think I won't have any issues. I know we're given five years based upon And I think I won't have any issues. Um, I know we're given five years based upon what was outlined in the job description. And I think I could do it well within those five years.
Please discuss how you have increased communications both internally and externally in past positions.
Um, so in my current position, I um increasing um, you know, public awareness of what's going on. We've utilized the website for the D W a lot more than we have in years past. Um, we post our parking bans on there. Um, anytime there is a um a water break or road uh work, we try and communicate that with the public. Um, I also try to communicate that with other departments in the town as well, um because we all, we all get questions all the time. Um, you know, and I think it's important for us to all communicate and to know what's going on um so that, you know, we're all working as a team.
Please describe any process improvements that you have developed, including how you identified the need, the steps taken, and including the use of technology applicable.
Uh, can you repeat the question?
Any process improvements that you have developed, including identifying the need, the steps that were taken, and including the use of technology applicable.
Okay, um, so in my, again, in my current position, I know I've said that probably a million times already. It uh, the person who had the job for me uh was in it for a very long time. And, you know, when you're in a job for a particular amount of time, you get set in your ways. Um, so it really took a lot of time to bring that, you know, to do things a little bit more modern. I have um created a work order system with um, you know, prior to the upgrades in the municipal software to, you know, streamline the water department, our um appointment, our appointments, and to keep track of those in a better fashion.
And do you feel that, or how would you rate yourself as far as technology using spreadsheets, PowerPoints, Word documents, et cetera?
Um, I'm, I'm very good with technology. I um, on my resume, there was quite a few uh computer programs that I'm pretty proficient in. And um, I think we really need to work on modernizing our um processes here in Town Hall. Um, it's been a long time that we're kind of lacking in the technology that other cities and towns use.
Follow up to that, because I think it's a good point. So how can you, as the clerk, help with that?
Um, so I think the uh modernizing of our records, um, you know, keeping that, digitizing them, I think would be a huge thing. I know there's, some of them are. Um, but continuing that process. Um, also, when it comes to elections, there's um, there's a lot of software out there that can be used. When we have to determine by looking into it to see if it's worth the investment to the town, if it's worth the money. I mean, technology is great, only if you use it. If you don't, if you have it and you don't use it, there's not much of a point.
Thank you. I think that concludes the questions, right?
That does.
You have any questions for us?
I do know.
Not a one.
Because what do we know about elections? Good call.
All right, um, we are gonna come back to this, I believe, under old business tonight. I'm not quite a hundred percent sure if we're gonna make a decision on this tonight, but it's possible and we're gonna get to it when we get to old business on our agenda tonight.
Okay.
With that.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Hey, Chief. You got your guy?
Candidates.
Huh?
I got three candidates.
You got him here?
Someone?
You got him here already? Because this is like two weeks in a row with a meeting, you know, one week off, and we're running twenty minutes ahead of schedule.
No, you can't put him in the bag.
So, good afternoon. We have three candidates uh for application for Call Four firefighters. And we'll start with our first candidate, which is Michael Nielsen. He's here first, let him know the goal first. Mike, you might have a seat right there. Thank you. How are you?
Not bad. How are you guys?
Very well, thank you.
Twenty minutes ahead of schedule.
Don't get used to it around here. That's very out of character for Smith. Now these are out of order for what we had, so give us a second.
No worries.
We're from By God West Southfield, as they call it.
Yeah, one, two states have, actually.
Yep.
So.
That's practically Southland.
Yeah, yeah, my neighbor is South. My backyard's South.
So what brings you to the Southwick Fire Department?
Um, honestly, you guys are just as close to me as uh as West Southfield's fire department. And um, I've been working with West Southfield for um to become a volunteer there as well. Um, my father was a firefighter for thirty-six years in Westfield, um retired. About a year ago, I found myself in between jobs and started uh looking into the process of it and decided I think it's something I want to do, so. I started working with um West Southfield. I took the written exam and physical exam in Massachusetts. I know it's not required here in Southwick, but definitely volunteering is a a place to start.
Excellent. And where do you work now?
Uh, right now I work for a construction company in Westfield, A Clark.
Yep.
Home renovations, deck builds, additions, things like that. Put in a wood floor to that.
Excellent. Jason, Diane? So you said a place to start. What's your ultimate plan? Do you want to start here and move on, or would you like to stay here?
I would like to stay here. Um, from the conversations I've had with the firefighters at the the first interview, it seemed like, I mean, a great group of guys and and everybody there had was extremely helpful welcoming and um they were telling me about uh Fire One and Two and all the training and things that they do. And one of the things that excited me was um, I'm forgetting her name.
Debbie Bishop?
Yes. Yeah, she had, she had asked me at the end, she said, would driving a, or would learn to drive a fire truck interest you at all? And it very much did. So, um, and I had told her that too, that I was looking to become full-time. And, I mean, really, full-time and volunteer would be just fine by me.
Says you are not an office job kind of person.
Absolutely.
Okay. So being on a truck would be good, full-time.
That is the ultimate goal.
Okay.
So what's, what, I get to ask my question that I get to ask every, so what's standing between you and becoming a Call firefighter for the town of South?
Uh.
That'd be us.
I was gonna say, uh, from you guys.
I'd entertain that motion.
Want to do it individually?
Yeah, we might as well. It's kind of more fun, right?
Right.
Uh, so this is.
We have, we're looking for three positions, correct?
Yep.
And we have four candidates tonight?
We have three candidates.
We only have three.
Three of them.
Okay.
There was four on the list, but there's three on your agenda.
Got it.
I'm sorry, it makes it pretty easy then.
Sure does.
So I'd like to make a motion to appoint Michael Nielsen as a Call firefighter for the Southwick Fire Department.
Second.
Roll call vote. Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Dan Gill, aye. It's a while before you get to drive though, I think.
I'd be glad.
Yes, no.
I would want to be sent over there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Well, that's cool. Won't have to disappoint anybody tonight.
Well, it's early.
Well, maybe.
So our third ca, our second candidate for tonight is Dan Mahoney. Again, if you'd have a seat right there. Again, also a candidate for Call Four firefighter.
Have a seat, Dan. How are you?
I'm doing well.
How are you? Dan, Daniel?
Dan's fine.
What brings you to the Southwick Fire Department?
Um, first initially saw the sign out in front um that they were hiring, and I've always kind of had an interest in firefighting and uh recently visited a friend down south and got to visit his station and kind of gave me the talk, like I think could be a good fit for you. I own my own um private chef business, so uh
Ha-ha.
I would call, uh, I'd call it part-time, you know, and um I definitely love what I do and passionate about it, but I would love to find something that's more, you know, um, more consistent, full-time, while still being able to do it all when I want.
And your private, your, your prior position, or is it concurrent, is also a personal chef. I see there's a need in the fire station.
You have a pancake breakfast, chili cook-off, all these things. You gotta kind of ace them here.
Someone knows what to do with goose eggs.
Uh, that is my current position, yes.
Okay. All right.
So same question I asked before, yeah, uh, Mr. Nielsen, what are your long-term plans? Do you want to be a full-time firefighter? Yeah, um, I'm not. I like the, the beginning process of, you know, um, learning to be a firefighter one and kind of seeing where it goes as far as growth and um time of commitment. But I do like the, the fact that um there's room to grow in it and it's a new challenge that I would like to kind of take on at, you know, I'm thirty-six. It's something that I would like to grow with. So, yeah, over time, I believe it would be a full-time thing for me.
Any questions for us?
No, not really.
So you ask the same question again?
You might as well.
Yeah. So what's standing between you and being on the Southwick Fire Department?
Hopefully, nothing.
Want to push over as we are. End stand a motion, please.
Make a motion to appoint Daniel Mahoney as a Call firefighter.
Second.
Roll call vote, please. Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Dan Gill, aye.
Congratulations, you made it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, we'll see you later. Thank you.
Thank you for your interest.
We went other Dan Mahoney last year. Pretty common name.
Not this one?
Oh, Mahoney's been spotted.
Was a teacher in.
Perhaps, right?
Teacher up in Winston. Okay. So this one must be Jack.
Yeah, our final candidate is Jack Radway, also for Call Four firefighter. Jack, you have a good day there. Thank you.
How are you, Jack?
I'm good. How are you?
Great. What brings you to the Southwick Fire Department?
So back in January, I was playing juniors for hockey. Um, I got hit in the head one too many times, so I didn't want to, you know, risk a little CTE. So I was talking to a few of my buddies and they're actually a few firefighters. They were in the Air Force and went down to Springfield. And they were telling me, Southfield and Southwick are like looking for firefighters. So I looked in, I go to the gym like five minutes down the road. So I started looking into it. Uh, I looked into all the things and kind of just like caught my attention. And the whole thing with like being like part of a team that down at the station, kind of missed that from hockey, so that'd be good to have back.
And you have no work experience on your resume today?
Yeah. I did hockey all the way until senior, my, basically last year, and that was what I did all summer, was wake up at like five, skate, all the way until like basically four o'clock at night and just went back to bed. So.
What did it change?
Yeah, playing juniors dispatch it.
I'm a goalie.
You are?
So I've been hitting the head a lot.
Yeah, and it shows. Yeah, you know, see, I didn't want to turn out like that.
You're hired, son.
All right, great sense of humor. So you're used to training hard?
Yes, yeah.
Long hours?
Yeah.
Nights.
I kind of missed out a little bit about it because I've only been working out at the gym, so I kind of, we have like a rowing machine at home and it doesn't, you do it for a while, but yeah, no, I love working out. I kind of miss it a little bit, so. Need something back.
So you'd be looking to make this a career?
Oh, a hundred percent. Yeah, that's my goal. I'm, I'm signed up to take a E M T course starting, actually next week, we have orientation to become an E M T, also be an E M T and firefighter, but it's definitely something I want to do full-time, guess my life probably.
Do you see yourself going on to become a medic?
Um, I'm not sure. I'm keeping an open mind to it. Kind of gonna explore down the fire path and the E M T thing and see which one kind of suits me more. I'm leaning towards more of the firefighter thing. Um, I think that would suit me more, but I'm keeping an eye on the both.
Are there questions?
None.
Nope.
So what's standing between the fire department and you? I gotta be consistent, Joe.
I'm not sure.
It'll be us right about now.
Yeah, I would probably say, it'd probably just be you guys and then it's probably about that.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Jack Radway as a Southwick Call firefighter.
Perfect.
I'll second that.
Now we just got to vote. You're almost there.
Okay.
Doug Mogul, aye.
All right. Jason Perron, aye.
Dan Gill, aye.
Now we're there. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You definitely have the most enthusiasm.
I wanted to have this idea, I'd hope so. Perfect. Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you.
You too.
All right. We're gonna acknowledge payable payroll warrant number two, four, two, one, dated April ninth in the amount of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and ten cents. Then we're gonna acknowledge payables warrant two, four, two, B dated April sixteenth in the amount of two hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and nine cents. And we're gonna acknowledge special payables warrant number two, four, two, five, B from April eighteenth in amount of six hundred and forty dollars and fifty-eight cents. And one more, special payroll warrant dated four, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-four in the amount of eleven thousand, forty-seven dollars and ninety-one cents. Onto the minutes. Uh, are we okay with approving the open session minutes of four, six, and four, eight as an omnibus motion?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
Roll call vote. Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Dan Gill, aye.
Great. Now we have exec session from four, six, and four, eight.
It does, four, six. There's three, one per.
What? Oh, all the way. You want to make a motion for the sixth and and or the eighth at the same time?
Make a motion to include the executive session minutes from April eighth and April sixth.
Second.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Thank you, aye.
Thank you. Okay, discussion items and action items continue. First is discuss whether we continue early voting or opt-out for only for local elections. And I think when I prefaced this last meeting, um, this year's all set. Um, we are going to have early voting for this year's local elections, but I wanted to bring it back to this board as an agenda item. Since we didn't have enough time to discuss it at all at the last meeting, it would have been a late addition to the agenda, which I thought wasn't appropriate. Um, but coming into the now that we have a year to decide for uh next May's election and future local elections, if we should should or should not have early voting. And so we, I believe we have a sheet here with some tabulations of the voting from the presidential primary um and the absentee tabulations and you can get an idea of the number of folks that voted over the number of hours that we were here. So I just wanted to have that discussion. And and I also make the point that
But we're only talking about local.
Only local, right? The rest is pretty much been codified, if you will, but it did give the law, the laws, as I understand it, give um cities and towns the option to opt-out of early voting for local only elections, so only our May election or any other special elections that were to be held in town. You know, I, and I want to make the point that um this doesn't change mail-in voting or absentee voting. You still have all of that. Hi, Michelle. Jessica.
He didn't see you slip in.
Took my glasses off while I was reading. It was bounding in. So
I have a question on the sort of the front end. If I may?
Sure.
Um, in one of Jessica's emails, um the question was put out because the state is requesting us to submit our financial info for potential grant funds. What are those grant funds? And and does do they continue?
So it means for the state funds. Um, so I would have to have you guys vote to opt um not opt out of the mail and to opt into in-person voting, I'd have to have you vote for the for that to qualify for state funds back from the state. And then um this is a vote that you guys are going to have to do yearly for local elections.
And what is, what do we get out of the grants? What is it covered or?
I'm going to refer to Michelle on that. That's why I'm here, because I have heard that. So this is the first time that they're actually going to give money back for the local if you choose to have the um either by mail or in person. So generally, these uh grants are for the state state elections. So but for this year, it's the first time. So it'll probably once they open up the door to it, it's going to be an every-year thing as long as you opt into uh one or both.
To cover how much of our costs?
A portion of it. I can't say that it'd be all because even we only get a portion for the state elections.
My question to you, is it worth it?
I'll let her answer that. Can I at least tell you last year I came with the registers? And um the discussion really went into, let's look at three years worth of data to say whether it's worth it or not. It's really kind of hard to go into something not having some historical data, and this would only be your second year. It's actually already a day late as it is right now to even offer getting out of anything. Um, so this is just a formality at this point. Um, had had we been able to realize about a month ago, uh, we could have chose to get out of it, but again, I with the void registers last year kind of pitched, try to do it at least for three consecutive years. So you have some good historical data from local to local to local, not local to a state or a primary, anything like that.
Yeah. And right now we only have the one local. Would, do we have data, you have data going back though, right? In your spreadsheet?
Last year was the first local. With
Oh, that we did. That we did. Right, right. You did say that.
And last year's local to this year's local is going to be completely different because it's got the state elections where everyone got their um cards. So everyone who opt in to any of that automatically, if the, you know, we had opt out, it wouldn't matter, but because we're still in, that um they're all going to get a ballot for the local election. So you're going to have three years of data where really only one year, one and rare, there are three are going to be more compatible to doing that analysis. Um, but the this this particular year is going to kind of throw it off a little bit.
So the numbers that you gave us, twenty-six percent of the votes were early vote.
You're looking at me nice?
Versus in-person, yeah. Yeah. And for the presidential, it was fifty-six point eight percent early vote of the total. So half for a local. And if I got this right, the cost for the extra time for the poll workers was about seven hundred dollars for those early vote days. Is that correct?
That's for the May?
Yeah. Just for the staff time on that?
Yeah.
Right?
Yep.
Would you anticipate those same kind of hours? Can you anticipate that for the future?
Yep, I did the, I'm doing the same exact hours for this upcoming election, yeah.
The seven or eight hundred dollar cost for those extra days? The twenty-six percent of the vote?
But did we have, you didn't always, everyone step back. So we've had a lot more folks sign up now for mail-in voting than we had previous, correct?
Right now, yes.
Yeah. So this is what you were alluding to with the data is going to be tough to measure last year to this year. This year is going to be very telling to see what you get with all the mail-in as well. And and as I said, when we started this discussion a little bit last week, but in formally this week, we're, we'd have to do it this year because we kind of missed the deadline to opt-out of it anyway. But it was, to me, it was it was the right decision to make to do that because it just wouldn't, it wouldn't appear right to carry that on amended agenda from the select board. You know, on a Monday morning to post that for Monday evening and then opt-out of local, you know, early voting. I just think the the optics of that would just not be great. So hence why we decided to just carry forth this year. And then we can, you know, on a go-forward basis, and apparently we're going to have that decision to make again at some point next year again, if we want to. And I guess there was a recommendation here to have three years of history, so maybe even we continue it for one more year after this. I I don't know. That'll be the this board's decision to make uh fifty weeks from now, not, you know, um to decide if they want to continue to do it in outlying years, but I I just want to make sure, you know, I would, I was clear about this last week and I want to be, continue to be very, very clear about it. This is there's so many opportunities to vote now and so many different ways to vote. I I want, I think the board needs to just weigh out whether the time of staff plus the cost um plus the other resources that are allocated to the early voting. If if we were denying one person the ability to vote, I say we do it. But if there are so many opportunities to vote that that's not really the case, then I don't know that there's a much harm if you didn't have early voting for the local. That's my opinion.
Well, you know, I'm glad Jess and Michelle showed up because that was was important to me is to hear from the people that are actually doing the work. It, you know, and if there's the state saying the best way to go is get three years of data to base it off, then uh obviously
Then we're going to go one more year.
Yeah.
See what it tells us.
That would make the most sense.
You may get a second year of mail-in voting that fifty percent of people want to do mail-in.
And we look at it based off last year's, I I don't want to say it's not, it's not worth it, but you know, the numbers are very, very low. So we'll see, you know, based on that those stats and and what we look at.
So it seems we would ride it out one more year.
Well, this year's a foregone conclusion and you guys can
One more year being the next one.
Decide next year what this looks like, whether you want to continue to do it or not. And we'll see what the mail-in response looks like this year versus early voting. I think it's going to be very telling.
So you keep track of all this. You already have the spreadsheet, so we'll have another good, solid year of data.
Your new town clerk will have all that data.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Okay.
So do we need to take any action tonight or we're already opted in?
Yes. Yep, we got to do the vote for the opting in for the or not opt out of the mail and to opt in for them person. So that MGO.
For twenty-twenty-five.
Fifty-four.
For this election coming for this election coming up for twenty-twenty-four, the one that's going to be in a month.
That's short notice on that note.
Well, that's why we're technically a week late. That's why I said this was a foregone conclusion. So it's not to opt out. This is like the dead explosion.
Yeah, not to opt out of mail, to opt into in-person. And this is so I can apply for the state funds.
For the local ex- election that'll be held in May of twenty-twenty-four. Next one. Would someone like to make that motion, Mr. Brown?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Roll call vote, please. Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Thank you, aye.
Done. Thank you.
There is the changing election regulations. Thank you for all that.
Yeah, appreciate it.
And I, I got it. I understood it all.
All right, next. Acknowledge flyer for the Southwick Fire and Police Association Golf Tournament, which will be Saturday, May twenty-fifth at Edgewood. Um glad to see that the two associations got together to put this on. Um if anyone has any questions? Where's the fire chief? We left. Well, all the police chief, he's right there. Uh, entry fee is a hundred and twenty-five dollars, eighteen holes with a cart, three food serving stations on court, raffles and prize halls. And if anyone wants to be a sponsor or more event details, there's a QR code here. Scan it right under it. There you go. Or you can contact the select board, the fire department, the police department. Okay. Accept and approve a donation of six oh, I had a question about that. Yeah, there's a typo on the agenda. I knew it would be right in the, in the letter. So uh, I need a motion to accept a very generous donation from an Andrew and Diane Gale in honor of K-9 Jack and his partner Sergeant Crookah and K-9 General and his partner Sergeant Westcott. The police department is requesting the board vote to accept and approve the donation of six hundred and fifty dollars can be placed in the K-9 gift account to be used in the future. And this is a memo from Chief Robert Landis. I need a motion to accept that.
I will make that motion.
And I will second the motion. And it would be a roll call vote. Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Thank you, Alex.
And thank you very much. Okay. And we need a motion to accept and approve the donation of seventy-five dollars into the library gift account from Andrea Bugby and James Wong to benefit the library's summer reading program.
Make that motion.
Second.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Thank you, aye.
Acknowledge flyer for the pancake breakfast to support the civic fund and the Southwick Food Pantry. So this is going to be Sunday, April twenty-eighth, eight AM to eleven AM at the Southwick Fire Department. But it's open house for police and fire. The police department will be open too. Well, if you can find the fire department, you can find the police department. They're right across the driveway from each other. Adults, fifteen bucks, children's ten to five or five to ten, five dollars, under five is free. And it's sponsored by the Southwick Police Association, the Southwick Fire Association and Malicious Farms. Okay, sign memorandum of under, of agreement between the town of Southwick and the Southwick Police Officers Coalition for Officer Kelly Miller. Need a motion for the chair to sign.
Make that motion.
Second.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Thank you, aye.
Approve the hiring of a summer page help for the library starting end of June for eight weeks at fifteen dollars an hour.
Make that motion.
Second.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Thank you, aye.
Acknowledge invitation, boy, the social calendar is burgeoning here. The meet the artist reception at the Southwick Cultural Council's twenty-third annual art exhibition April twenty-sixth, that's this Friday, Southwick Town Hall, four fifty-four College Highway. Um, and then the art show is open for everybody should know about this because it's a great, great event. Saturday, April twenty-seventh and Sunday, April twenty-eighth from ten AM to four PM. With the uh, and the artist reception is on Friday. Approve the change order number oh, one, four for nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars for contractor Adams Plumbing and Heating and architect BLW Engineers, Inc. And this is part of the Town Hall HVAC project. So this is nine hundred, wait, the next one's better, I promise. This is nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars going up. Motion, please.
Make that motion.
Second.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Thank you, aye.
Okay, here's the better news. Here's the one decreasing. It's another change orders number oh, oh, seven to for a decrease of ninety-two thousand, four hundred dollars to contractor Adams Plumbing and Heating and Architect BLW Engineers for the same project.
I'm glad you made that motion.
Second.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Thank you, aye.
Acknowledge invitation for the American Legion Post three, three, eight to participate in the Memorial Day Parade Monday, May twenty-seventh. Gather at nine fifteen uh, and then the parade's probably at nine thirty. Um parade will gather few nine fifteen and nine thirty in the parking lot across from the summer house. Parade will proceed at ten to the Town Green at the War Memorial. Following the service, parade will proceed in vehicles to the old cemetery to lay a wreath, then continue to the new cemetery for a short service. Uh, we'd be honored if you and or your group would join us remembering our country's military servicemen and women who have lost their lives serving our country. At the conclusion of service, there'll be a gathering at the American Legion for participants and their families. Uh, this is always a well-attended uh remembrance event. Um and the turnout from the residents of the town of Southwick is always great. We pay tribute to our veterans. Um I'm sorry, for those who have lost their lives in service to our country. So hope to see everyone there. Okay, moving on to new business. First item of new business, review the DPW request to relocate all staff to six, six, one College Highway. Mr. Brown?
Will come up.
Please.
Good evening.
How are you doing? How are you? Good yourself?
Excellent. So this isn't uh like a new concept. I've presented this before.
So this isn't, uh, like a new concept. I've presented this before the board in the past couple of years. Um, my reasons for the request has not changed, but I think there's some other changes that happening in the building that may facilitate to make this make more sense at this point. Um, in particular, there's the, the clerk treasure, um, clerk treasure.
Hot topic.
Thank you. That obviously, that, that obviously being split up. Um, so I think it makes sense that, uh, there, there may be a need for some space in town hall for a relocation of another apartment. So I think taking that staff out of D P W, moving it out of, out of town hall, moving it to D P W would free up that office for whatever office that goes in there. Um, in this letter, I gave you a bunch of reasons why I think it makes sense, not only for D P W, but also for the public to have all of our staff in one building. I can go through those if you'd like. Um, I know, I think I've talked to, I most of you individually. Um, but I guess I, I'd like to, uh, move this forward.
Uh, I've had the pleasure of seeing this movie a couple of times. Um, and then you and I spoke about this fairly recently again. So, for discussion.
I always thought it was a great idea. I think it makes things more efficient for that department to run. It's gonna save time, money, consolidation of efforts. I don't think it's a public service issue. Um, I think Christie, whoever the administrator may be, is on the phone a lot with customers, not necessarily face to face. Face won't be a problem over there either.
No, we'd get, I mean, not exaggerating, we get ten times the foot traffic at D P W than we get in this office here. And it really, right now, it's just me at, at, at D P W full-time. I am in this building, you know, a few hours each day.
Track him down sometimes, the building, are you at? And we get screwed up.
Yeah, after once, yeah. Uh, you know, Rich is, uh, he's also has office in that building, but he's on the road half the day. And the crews are on the road most of the day. So really, right now, it's just me. And if we're getting people from the public, you know, deliveries, uh, vendors to stop by, a lot of times leaving notes on the door, you know, putting the cards in the, in the mailbox or whatnot. We're not there to see that stuff, see that, see the individual. So I think in that sense, it makes a lot of sense. Uh, the really only time we get a lot of foot traffic here is when we do bills. And we do bills twice a year. And, uh, and if we need to, we can set up office time in this building, you know, for three or four weeks after bills are sent out, where people have questions on their bills. They can come and, and, and sit down with us. Christie, whoever is in that position can have their computer. Everything that, that she needs, answer the questions, it would be right in front of her. You know, she could set up office in one of the conference rooms here. That's not an issue. I have talked with, I know Jessica stepped out, but I have talked to her about this. She seems on board of the plan. There'll be some coordination we have to do in terms of, um, like selling one-day transportation passes that we do now. I think they could take on that role. Uh, without, without much interference. We do, we sell twenty to thirty of those a year. That's about it. So I really think there is minimal disruptions to other departments if we take our staff out of this building.
And staff is generally in favor of this move?
I would say part of the staff is generally in favor. I think we all know that. But I think that's the, that's the deal. I mean, I think it makes sense. If you look at it from, you take your own personal opinion out of it, look at it from the town standpoint as a whole and the D P W as a whole, it makes all of, it makes sense to have all of us in our building. You look at other departments, police, fire, all their staff, all their office work, A managers, they're all in that building.
The police department's moving in here next week.
Well, he's, he's, he has been here. He has been here.
And it's inefficient, isn't it, when you're having to go back and forth to prove the point? I, I think it just makes communication sense, uh, a lot.
So what work would need to be done at D P W, if any?
So we have the space available. We'd have to, have to create some office areas, you know, we have the space to build out. We could probably put some partitions with some desks and chairs. Uh, there may need to be some I T upgrades, just so we have, um, uh, connections at each, at each, at each portal, at each laptop, at each, um, desktop, I should say. Uh, but as far as that part, I don't think there's a lot. We already have printers and, and copiers down there. Uh, it really is just getting the physical, what's in this building here and moving it down, and then, you know, creating that, that office space for those individuals.
Which is net of how many people?
Two, two and two people.
And a lot of file cabinets.
And a lot of, yeah.
But you could reduce the file cabinet, consolidate records.
We have two sets of records for a lot of stuff right now. And we are trying to, you know, go electronic a lot of stuff. Um, right now, I have my own server, which I use, and then D P W has their own service, which I use, you know, we don't commingle any of those, even electronic files right now.
I think your partitions now are file cabinets, right?
Pretty much, yeah, yeah.
Well, there you go.
In my mind, I've laid it out. I mean, we, it would take a little bit of, you know, configuration, but the, the room is there for two more offices. I don't, I don't doubt about that.
You don't have to convince me. Makes absolute sense, a no-brainer.
Ditto. Agreed.
You wanna put a schedule together and a plan?
Absolutely.
But where do we put the partitions funding as far as got enough money in your supplies line?
Or did the partitions come out of here that you have here to take down there?
Cabinets, aren't they?
Up here, they are file cabinet. I think there is one per, there may be one partition here. We do have several at, at the D P W as well that we can like a reconfigure, so we have, uh, individual, individual office spaces.
Maybe if we have to crawl, walk, run, right?
Yeah.
To get where we need to get to.
Exactly, exactly.
Did everyone, are you gonna be doing any of your bill work down there? You're just gonna schedule days up here to do it?
Bill work, you mean, uh, for the?
What does Christie need to be here for?
Yeah.
For those, when your billing cycle is.
She needs to be here to answer questions if the public comes in. So either that can be done over the phone, we can set up a, we can set up a phone in the lobby.
So I'm just trying to determine.
Does she, does she need to be? Does she need to be here or could they go see her there?
Apps comes, comes here at D P W, but I doubt that can, that can happen. Yeah, that was, that's my intent anyways. That's my vision, is that if you have a question for D P W or anything.
And that was the big, frankly, from previous discussion, that was always the big, the bigger stumbling block, I think.
I mean, I don't know why she would need to pack up and come here.
No, I, well, there's probably a few times a year when they do billing or whatever that people may come in here. I don't know.
And then go pay the bill right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's why I say when they have people have questions about their bill, they like to talk to somebody about why is this higher? So she can pull up that billing software that she talked about earlier today. Go over the hourly or daily usages and explain why the bill is higher than usual, normal. And then, um, they can go over and walk over to the clerk's office and then pay the bill, the clerk's office and pay the bill.
I mean, you could try that the first time around or second time around, and if nobody comes in, you, you do away with it.
I have no problem with that. Yeah, it, it's gonna be a learning curve for a lot of people, all of us, you know, my, our, our staff included. But I think in the long run, it'll, it'll be a, definitely a, a benefit for everybody.
This had come in front of us, like I said, probably three times in the past. And I was probably, to be honest, I was ambivalent about it. And there was opinions on both sides of the, on both sides of me on the board at the time, so we didn't really make a decision. I, I think it makes, I think it makes reasonable sense to try.
Now is the time.
And it's an opportunity. I think it, you know, with, with the, the clerk's office splitting up, it makes, it, it does present an interesting wrinkle to it as to how you could now move that office to there or figure out when all the musical chairs stop, where everybody winds up.
Yeah.
So, make a plan.
I will do it.
Okay.
While you're here. So this was something that had come up uh, meeting or so ago. I think I kinda socialized it. We had talked about it kinda just informally. There was a lot of stuff in flux, but I see that it's, was suggested to put on the agenda tonight, so we might as well start a discussion about it if it's something that makes sense. And that is discussion regarding park and rec and buildings and grounds departments under public works.
So I know it's been discussion. What I, um, what I did is I gave you a little flow chart, and this is just for discussion only. This was my kinda gentle take on how I think department could run with folding in these two departments underneath D P W. I did talk to a few staff in both park and rec and buildings and grounds to kinda get their feedback and thoughts on how this could work. Um, so I guess I'll kinda go through this flow chart here, I think, so, you know, it kinda helps me understand and then see it, see the vision in my mind as well. I would see, just like we have water, sewer, highway, engineering, solid waste divisions in the D P W, I would see another, you know, division for buildings and grounds and one for, for parks. And then, uh, we would obviously have staff that are dedicated to each of, to each of the departments under that division. I think what helps with this pattern, uh, or with this format is that everybody's under D P W and that, you know, within our departments now, our five departments are always helping out, sharing services with others. And I think that can extend to these other departments as well. I'll give you a really good example. Just this afternoon, um, I got a call, we got a call, like probably four or five phone calls within like ten minutes about a tree that fell across the rail trail. Okay, so who was responsible for the tree on, on the rail trail? And I'm like, I don't know. Do you know? I don't know. I called, so I called, I called Russ Anderson up. I said, hey, there's an issue. I know he's kinda helping out. I said, I think this might fall on you, but I'm not sure. He was, I said, okay, well, then I said, like, go take, go take a look at it. And then in the meantime, I got some pictures of what it looked like, and I, I called Russ back and said, I'll, I'll just go take care of it. Sent a couple guys out, and it's something that we got the capabilities in-house to do. The guys are available overtime. We took care of it. You know, those types of questions, like who's responsible for it? You know, those calls came to D P W. They didn't go to park and rec. They didn't go to any of the department. They came to D P W.
Should the tree walk?
Cause I was, well, yes, but nothing to do with it. But, but that's a great example of, you know, I think in people's mind, you know, we do a lot of, and I get a lot of phone calls and, you know, uh, queries about parks and, you know, other, other, other departments that are right now under D P W. I think, and, and other people think that we do already have those services. So anyways, going back to, I digress, but if we're going back to buildings and grounds, I, I would see a very similar setup to how it's certainly configured. We have a supervisor. I think that's occupied by, by Russ Anderson as the kinda interim supervisor for that department. And then you have your full-time staff. I think there's a couple of part-time individuals al- also. But that supervisor really is responsible to oversee the day-to-day functions of, of those individuals. I would see my role in that as kinda someone who helps out with the budgeting, uh, helps out with the long-term planning, maybe coordinating other departments. That would be my role with buildings and grounds, but keeping all the staff, kinda how is it currently laid out? Any questions about that?
Not for me. I think this is something we need to get to. I think there's some work to be done. Like, I think we actually have to get a special act of the legislature in order to authorize this because of how operating without a charter, the D P W was, exists via special legislation, and we, it was given to you guys maybe a month ago or so. So we would have to go in front of, uh, a future town meeting to ask for that act in the first place and then, um, wait forever in a day for the legislature to act, and then another day or year for the governor to, to sign it. But I think it's something that the way you framed it is kinda how, you know, I envision it. I, I think it needs a lot more discussion and probably needs, um, just a little bit more talk and, and, and the other stakeholders involved. Obviously, park and rec is involved here, other departments are involved here. Um, but given how everything is kinda shaking out right now, it kinda makes sense to have the discussion. Um, as we embark on, you know, other processes and other hirings to, to make sure that, you know, we don't, we don't that we, we're taking everyone's feedback into account and planning properly as we move forward.
Yeah, this is just, this is just kinda like, just to
No, absolutely.
Catch up discussions, yeah.
Again, so we, we talked about it, uh, I think it was, I don't remember, it was two meetings ago or, or, or three meetings ago, I said, you know, this is something that we should think about. And so I wanted to carry it on an agenda item. Thank you for bringing it up and putting it in, you know, kinda putting it to form and saying this is how it might look like. Um, but I think in, in a upcoming meeting shortly, we should have, you know, park and rec come in, um, and the interim buildings and grounds, and see what, what they kinda think. I also think with a new C A O coming in, I think that's gonna be kind of important for, for them to weigh in as well. And we can give them a little bit of time to get acclimated in that role, but, um, it's just my take on it. Thoughts?
Definitely, you know, you mentioned park and rec commission and stuff like that, so obviously, you said you gotta talk to all the stakeholders involved and then just figure out what works.
Yeah, my thought of park and rec is you have right now a, a, a director, I think, and I know that's a full-timer. I don't think it's quite a full-time position. I, I would see that position being eliminated, but the responsibilities of that individual will be spread amongst three individuals right now. My, me as a director, the supervisor, then the office manager. So those responsibilities would be kinda shipped between those three. There is an assistant, I, I may be assistant director in park and rec. I would see that individual staying on, in their role. Um, and then and then there would also be the, the, for the most part, there are part-time employees in park and rec um, that maintain the, the fields. They would be responsible to report through the supervisor, D P W's, that'd be Rich right now. He'd be responsible to kinda make sure they're doing their job, got the equipment that they need, you know, they're on the right track, follow up, making sure they're doing the right job, making the right thing. Um, so that's how I would kinda see how that would fold, but certainly there's a lot of moving parts. I think there's also maybe some confusion as far as, you know, like who's responsible for what within the park department, especially with the rail trail, you know, you got the friends of the rail trail involved, you got your part-time employees. Who is responsible at the end of the day? And I, I'll be honest, I've been here ten years, I don't even know. It really has never been set to form, and I think that needs to happen. And I think this is a good way that we can, we can make that and identify the roles for everybody involved. So we all know who to report to and who to call.
This past week somehow.
Just trying to get the things over there, that's all.
I think, I think they're on their way. I think they're on their way. No, it's, it's good. It's fine. It's, it's just for this point, it, it just goes to whoever can help.
Yeah, should.
So.
So that's what I got, I got that. My thought was just to kinda throw this in front of you, at least, at least we can all look at something and kinda maybe, maybe, I'm sure there may be some changes, but at least.
I think we move this under goals and objectives is something to drive at, cause I think it's something that we need to do. And there's like, you know, right now, there's a lot of positions in flux around the park and rec director, buildings and grounds. Yada, yada, yada. So the timing, the confluence of events has led us to here. Now's an oppor, you know, better to make an opportunity of it. And, and I, you know, we can talk to whoever we need to talk to to see if you can do it on an interim basis until you go through the whole governmental process of
Can we set town council on some research on this now to see if we can do it?
We absolutely can.
Part-time, yeah. On the way.
Correct. Further discussion on this for tonight?
Long time.
Cause we were doing so great. By the way, have you talked to Kim? Has she texted you? She's here.
Can, can we schedule the next group to come in and tell us their thoughts on it then?
Yeah, I think we can reach out to, uh, park and rec and buildings and grounds to have them come in and give us their thoughts maybe in next meeting.
Is somebody taking notes on that? Whoever?
Lisa's got it.
Lisa, okay.
For what it's worth, I will not be here next Monday.
That would be the perfect time to discuss it then.
I will not.
He won't be here.
Okay, and then somebody will get the town council to research whether we need an act or not.
Whether we can do it on an interim basis pending, and that, cause I don't think we have even time to get it up, um,
Uh, not before.
Not for the, so.
For this one.
All right, moving right along. Okay.
Is that it for me?
Yeah, thank you very much. No, appreciate it. Okay, review and discuss the A T M S T M warrants from eight twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, and set the order of articles. So this was, this was in chair mail, right?
Yes.
Okay, good, cause there will be someone very angry with me, cause I promised them a copy of this.
We're all on version three.
Get a copy. Yeah, we shall have it for you. So, first of all, and I think we can take this opportunity to tie this in. Um, we did have a very well-attended, very productive discussion. Last, what day was that? Thursday? Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday. Sheesh. You know, a lot of folks came up and, and wanted to talk to us and wanted to talk to, uh, and join via Zoom and whatnot to, to have their opinions heard and to kinda educate this board on uh, what was going to be a proposed bylaw. Um, the way that meeting was posted was that, um, we didn't think we could adequately vote that night based on how the meeting was, was advertised, so, uh, I had committed at that meeting to bring that back for a vote of this board tonight. Um, so as we go through that, um, I call your attention to, and I, I think we should vote on it anyway, but in version three of the agenda. But in version three of the agenda, uh, versus article two, because they, they haven't put the numbers yet, but what was article? Fourteen, I believe, right?
It's now not even on here.
Uh, it wasn't on V two either. So which was the one? Make sure, I want to make sure I get the right one.
Well, fourteen is blank, but I
It was blank on V two also. Whatever it was quote-unquote called, right? But I wanted to have, take an affirmative vote of the board to take it off the town meeting warrant, because that's what we had committed to the folks that were in person to do. So like I said, article numbers are irrelevant, irrelevant at this point because we, we're going to set the agenda of the, of the um, the town meeting shortly. But um, I would entertain a motion to just strike that proposed bylaw uh, from the annual town meeting agenda.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion to not include the hunting bylaw proposal in the town law.
Perfect. Roll call vote. Doug Mogul and I.
Jason Paul and I.
Danielle, I.
Done and unanimously. Done. So now we have V three of the agenda. Uh, we still don't have all of the articles yet in front of us to put forth, but um, so just for those playing along, article one is obviously is the election, so that's done. Article two, um is to town report. Three is appointment of minor officers. Article four is to sell or give the select board the authority to sell or trade obsolete equipment. And article five gives us the ability to apply and accept for grants. So articles two through five are generally handled on a consent basis as an omnibus motion. Article six establishes or amends any revolving accounts that we have. Um, and right now the only thing that's pending for that additional one is the, for E D C would be to establish a uh, revolving account for uh, economic development committee, and it says it needs some deep detail from the attorney. Article seven is holding, is a placeholder for a bond issue. I'm assuming that would be for roads. Article eight is blank now. Article nine is the budget. That would take up the majority of the time at town meeting. Article ten is the revolving funds, the existing uh, revolving funds and reauthorize those and set the limits on those funds. Article eleven, school budget. Article twelve is a, a debt authorization for the regional school district. It's their capital budget. Article thirteen. I had asked to move this to the special, but it's still being carried on the uh, annual. It's, it's immaterial for it was just to save a little time, but it's an opioid settlement reserve fund and revocation of a stabilization fund. Um, this is per a relatively new uh, Mass General Law, chapter forty-four, section fifty-three. Uh, article fourteen is, is blank. Article fifteen is a long-term license agreement. It's asking the town the, to give the select board the authority to enter into a long-term license agreement. And this is for the American Legion for the lease of the land in cooperation with the regional school district. Um, for the land that's part of the motocross area. Uh, article sixteen and seventeen are blank. Article eighteen is the CPC budget itself. Article nineteen is the allocation of their expenses to come from the C P A. Article twenty is, and I don't understand why, but it's a, a quirk of the law that we have to revote every year to pay the debt on the alum treatment that we already voted to incur, but this will be the fifth interest and payment principle on the six hundred thousand dollar bond that was issued. Article twenty-one is a CPC article for the uh, Southwick Library Yard revitalization. Article twenty-two is South Cove Middle Pond dredging. It's also a CPC article. Article twenty-three, and as is customary, the planning board always goes last. Article twenty-three zoning map amendment is a citizen petition for uh, to rezone some land at the Sodom Mountain Campground uh, on South Loomis. Article twenty-four will be a uh, zoning bylaw amendment for chapter one eighty-five, section twenty-eight regarding non-conforming uses, structures and lots. That's, we don't have any language back from them. Their hearing is still open on that. Article twenty-five is a zoning bylaw amendment, short-term rentals. This was sent back from the Attorney General, so this is a touch-up. Uh, piece of legislation to touch up our local bylaw. Article twenty-six is the acceptance of Revere Road. So this was something that we had allocated money to in a previous town meeting to lay out a subdivision road that was never properly accepted by the town, so that's to go and catch that. And then article twenty-seven is uh a donation of land on Berkshire Avenue from the Bruno family uh, to the town. Um, and article, wow, a lot of articles. Article twenty-eight, this is to rescind some borrowing authorizations that we had put forth that were not needed. So since we have the ability to bond for something, it, it is effectual to your bond rating. Um, and the ability to go out and bond for other projects, so this will rescind that bond authorization. Um, article twenty-nine is, and lastly, the last article would be for the water department. I would suggest that we may want to move this up somewhere. Um, because it's relatively important. To authorize a select board enter into a five-year contract with the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission to purchase wholesale water. Um, this is something that our, I believe our contract's up and needs to be renewed. Um, and without town meeting authorization, we can't enter, enter into a contract longer than, I believe it's three years, but so up to you, uh, lady and gentleman, if we want to move that article. Maybe to fourteen. So is there any, any other articles that you see that needed to relocate? It is completely one hundred percent. No discussion, no argument. The select board's purview as to how you order the warrant for the annual and special town meeting.
With, with the exception of the water, which I, well, I'm sure we'll have some questions. It seems to make sense to go with the other.
The rest of it kind of is, it's, if, if this was laid out intelligently, this one was added.
Addedly.
Yeah, for the end, so that's why it's there. I would suggest to move that to fourteen.
Yeah. Everything else seems to lay out just fine logically.
Just move the water up to fourteen. Out pretty easy.
So we have set the, we have now set the, oh, should we do that by vote?
With the exception of the blanks.
Well, the blanks will come out, the articles will get renumbered and it'll be, you know.
So there's no more, once we do this, this is closed.
I don't see unless we have to come back and vote on anything else, but there, when does the warrant have to be posted? Do we want to know?
Uh, two weeks prior to the
Today's the twenty-second April, so we're just about four weeks out. Yeah, yeah. So we're, we've got another week or so, but I think we could vote to set the order in case this is final, then we can go ahead. If we have to come back, we can come back. So I take a motion to set the articles as presented, except moving what is currently article twenty-nine to be somewhere between the opioid settlement and the long-term license agreement for the Legion. I will make that motion.
Second.
Doug Mogul and I.
Jason Corona.
Thank you.
Gonna hand them under the warrant to the moderators.
Do you have a copy of the specials?
No. I don't think I do in my folder. No.
We do not.
We do not yet. Maybe that'll be a new thing. Maybe keep it a surprise for the meeting.
They're waiting for you to pick a town.
Okay, next item. Review and start time for the special town meeting, six fifteen and the annual town meeting start time, six forty-five P M.
So I suggested that we post it to start at six thirty. Because I don't think we'll technically start it till six forty, just from experience, but we can't start it early. But we can start at late. We don't want to be sitting around five minutes waiting like we did last year.
Even after we did the pledge of allegiance and recognized all the people that passed and all the other?
So if you want to six forty-five, that's fine. It's, it's not that big of a deal, but sometimes we don't know how many things are on the special, the special.
It's short. Special's not long right now. I, I'm okay with six thirty.
It takes ten minutes to uh, do the special. Ten minutes to do that, that gives us, we'll be done by six thirty-five. We can start at probably six forty. If you say six thirty, people hopefully will be bored. The last, we had the last special, we were supposed to start at six, we ended up starting because there were so many people. Coming in, I always try to put something out there saying, come, you know, fill your seats and start inside.
Six thirty is fine with me. I'll be there.
Works for me.
Okay, motion to, do we have to make a motion? Because we actually, by the, I will not. So um, I will not be there, so you guys can start whenever you want. Um, so I think the law says that we, was just changed at the last annual that we have to vote to set that time. So I'll entertain a motion to start the special town meeting on, at six fifteen P M and the annual will start at six thirty P M at the regional school.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Doug Mogul and I.
Jason, I.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, I was hoping to have a chief's contract in front of you for this evening, which I do not. We will have some stuff to discuss later on, so we're going to cover the next one next week. Just slow going, nothing terrible.
Approve this. Mr. Mo or Chairman?
Yes.
Just with that thought. Would it be possible, because you could always change this because the applicants need time? And because of everything that's being put forward, could maybe a tentative date be soft?
We could discuss it. Uh, my trepidation chief is that until the lieutenant signs a contract to be the chief of the department, there's no vacancy to
Right, that's what I'm saying, a tentative date that can change because there's so many moving parts and you're looking at four applicants um, to come before you. And uh, but time is getting shorter and shorter. Again, that's going to put off your sergeants.
Yep.
Which uh, there's a, some mechanisms that are kind of out of our control for the sergeant's part. Um, because of the potential of another S R O and how those people fall into play and schooling that's going to be required, so um, if we could, I'm just recommending for, as the chief. Um, if we could set a tentative date, that could be pushed off if we had to, um, if the contract's not done.
Subject two, like you always say.
Well. Twenty-eighth of May? The day after Memorial Day.
So, so that's the Tuesday?
Yeah.
Yeah. Monday is an holiday, that can be.
If that works, works for.
All right, I've got some stuff I want to talk about on this one. I asked for it for the police chief. I'm going to ask for it now. I want an assessment center done for lieutenants and sergeants. It would take them two to three weeks to set this up. And I am not going to be involved in the lieutenant's position. You will not have my expertise in this one. Um, yeah, I know you've talked about that you've never picked anybody egregious. It has nothing to do with that. It has everything to do with, again, I'm going to say it again, this is the way that public safety is going with assessment centers or tests. So I'm, I would like an assessment center for these positions.
Duly noted. I guess we can discuss it, I guess. I'll be honest, it's kind of I don't know how you can opt out of a process and then dictate the process.
You can. We don't have to, there's no mandatory.
That's what I want to chew on and think about, so. You have any thoughts? We could set the date and we still, we're, we got a month, plus a month to get where we want to get.
Tentative date, let's set the tentative.
I have no problem with a tentative date, but I said this would take two, I've already reached out to them. It would take two to three weeks to set up. And within two days of the assessments, you'd have what we, the information we need.
My opinion on that hasn't changed.
My opinion on that isn't changing either. Not this time.
I say we create the vacancy and have this debate because we don't have the vacancy.
So tentative date twenty-eighth?
Twenty-eighth. I guess, by the way, I don't know if that's on our schedule right now for our meeting schedule of meeting the day after Memorial Day, but it is now.
Uh, no, June third is our next date, but we're not going to interview them on the date. It's due, or, or that's the interviews, not for the deadline for submission.
Right.
So what's the deadline for submission then?
There would have to be the week of town meeting. No, it'd have to be the week before that. It would have to be the seventeenth of May.
Which is two weeks.
I know they, they've been working on it.
I know that too.
I mean, unless we need on the twenty-eighth and we skip the third or?
Or you can do both.
Do both.
But if we get, if you, do you need more than? We're going to meet next week anyway, right? The twenty-ninth, we can have the further debate on, on if there's any additional process and hopefully we will have created the vacancy. Because that's the trick. We can't post, you can't post for applications till you have a vacancy and you can't you can't start taking applications for a job that doesn't exist yet.
It's technically not open until you're done.
Oh, that's why I'm just saying.
Well, but, and, and, right, no, I get it, but I think that, that I, I'm confident that I can, well, is Kim here yet? Because it's on her now. I threw the ball over the net. I gave her a draft contract in the last week to to put the form and there was a couple of things to, to touch up in there that I can bring back to you to review.
I'm fine to meet the twenty-eighth. And the twenty-ninth, if we want to do two and two, if we have four.
Were you going to hold your regular selectmen's business on the twenty-eighth as well?
I mean, that's a trick.
I would recommend.
We, we haven't had it scheduled.
Yeah, I would recommend you do the four on a separate night just because it's kind of takes some time.
Yep, and we may end up, yeah, we have, we'll have to see how that's going to all shake, you know, because here's what's, here's what's going on. Folks, May, we're, we, we usually don't meet the week before elections. Or to, or do anything substantive before the election. Then you've got a consent agenda on the twenty-first, which I will, if that, a consent agenda, I will not be there. I will not be at the consent agenda either. And so then the, that's where you are, because today's the twenty-second, we are meeting next week, the twenty-ninth.
We are meeting the sixth, the thirteenth and the twentieth, it says.
Yes, but it just, my protocol or by tradition, the thirteenth is kind of a
Light.
Very light meeting. And then you've got, you know, because it's, you have elections on the fourteenth. And then the twentieth, the week of the twentieth is town meeting, so you'll have a consent agenda on the twenty-first. And then Memorial Day is the twenty-seventh. And I am also out of town the thirty, yes. Was that Thursday? The thirtieth? Yes. So those are the dates we have to work with, so we'll, we'll just try to see what we can get done and try to get the chief's contract done, get that executed. That creates the vacancy, which then we go from there. But I have no problem with having the if we can post the vacancy next week, the twenty-ninth, and then have the that gives everybody, what did I say for that? Seventeenth? To have the applications in and then, and then interviews the week of either the twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth, but not the thirtieth to thirty-first, it would have to be after, following.
Okay.
Okay.
Got him, Tim.
Tentatively dead horse. Okay, approve the permit for the Ironman race twenty twenty-four. This was a wildly successful event last year. I was mildly happily surprised with how many folks turned out to root on these riders that are doing this. This is a globally known event. That actually makes people swim in the Connecticut River in Springfield and then they get out and bike to South. Um, that actually makes people swim in the Connecticut River in Springfield, and then they get out and bike to Southwick. And up into Westfield, Granville, I'm, the, the route map's similar to last year. Uh, but with a couple changes that were made to accommodate some bottlenecks and some trouble spots that we had last year. Um, and this is going to be June ninth. So I need a mo, I think we have to approve a permit, so there's a permit request in here. Um, so I entertain a motion to approve the permit.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Doug Mogul, I.
Jason, I.
Dan, go I.
So folks turn up for this route, these guys are, like, guys and gals.
I believe.
As they ride.
E D C is also doing a number of signs to put out along the routes with Q R codes, all the Southwick establishments, gas stations, yada, yada, et cetera, et cetera. And all these, yada, yada.
It's a good idea, it's a very transient event, because.
I know.
Though, they're, these guys are on bikes and.
Oh, the spectators.
Yeah, it wasn't.
I know, they're transient too.
Yeah, but anyway, it's a good idea, can't hurt. Um, review architect information for CPA application, a CPC for town hall exterior masonry rehabilitation on historic building. This was added to the agenda on the cons, on the uh amendment today. Uh, I had an email from Carl Steinhardt, this is a project of his that he had worked on diligently for a couple of years. And he has, wants to bring this in front of the Community Preservation Commission. Um, a lot of this was shown up during some of the preliminary work preparing for the roof. Um, the roof is now done, um, but we had a lot of water uh, activity with the water entering the building during the roof project when the gutters were off. And it did show some serious weakness in the, um, the masonry and the style of construction that was used back when this building was built. So.
It was a staggering amount.
Hmm.
That was a staggering amount for me, that wasn't what I was expecting.
Hmm, wouldn't surprise me. That would be a mouth.
It's like, Jesus, is that inside and out, or is that all outside?
Don't be surprised if it goes over that amount.
It's all inside, I mean, outside, it's all exterior.
Yep.
According to this.
So I guess what we're looking for tonight is to get, in cooperation with the current buildings and grounds to um, make a proposal to, on behalf of this, the select board would be the applicant in this case to make that application and put that application together to present at a future CPC meeting.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, I was surprised by the amount of money, too, thought it was gonna be a quarter million.
Well, no.
Well, yeah.
Carl explained it to me, and I knew it wasn't gonna be cheap.
And I saw, is Art Lawler still on, there he is. How are you, sir? You're on mute.
Yeah, how's that? Good evening, Mister Chairman, and uh, to you and through you to the rest of your board. Um, yeah, Carl had been working on this for quite a while, and he had actually approached some of the members of the CPC. Um, and they thought it was a, a very good thing. Uh, we did notice a lot of the deficiencies in the exterior vertical walls of the building when the gutters were removed, as you mentioned. Uh, and the uh engineers did a test, uh, an absorbancy test on the masonry um, units themselves, the bricks and the mortar. Uh, and they absorbed quite a bit of water. Uh, then they did a, a coating test where they put a, a seal on, on the masonry, the bricks and the uh mortar joints. And of course, it, uh, it, there wasn't very much absorption at all. Uh, we noticed that the uh water penetration um, mostly at the lintels above the windows and wherever there's really any fenestration, any windows or doors in the exterior walls. Uh, they were pretty much all leaking there, um, as many of you may remember. Um, so these engineers, uh, we just got this Friday, I guess it was, so we haven't had a chance to uh look at it in any depth. Um, but it's, it's pretty clear, and it is work that needs to be done to protect the building.
Hmm.
And I uh, Carl has asked me to help um, fill out the CPC application. So I will be working on that.
Well, this would be an opportune time for us to vote to make that application, then if somebody wants to make that motion.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Doug Mogul, I.
Jason, I.
Dan, go I.
All right, now you can make that application, now that we voted to do it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
How's the new place?
It's great. Yeah, we love it here, it's uh, nice sunny weather every day. Uh, except when it rains, and when it rains, it really, really rains.
Excellent, well, we miss you.
Yeah, I miss you guys. It's always been good working with the town of Southwick.
Absolutely. All right, any other new business? Mister Pearl?
None right now.
Yes, sir, I do. To add to goals and objectives with your approval, um, the not hunting bylaw. I did make comments about the education seemed to be about trespass laws, and I would like to do some education on trespass laws in conjunction with Police Department, Public Safety, and post something on our website, which led me to another thought, perhaps we need an actual bulletin board page on our website, not just that little swirling thing that nobody knows what they are. If I can proceed with that, I'll work with them and put something together.
Certainly can go on goals and objectives.
Okay. And, and actually, Jason's project with the D E I policy could go on a bulletin board as well, it's two part goals and objectives.
Okay, well, we can add that to the website piece that we've, we did put some money in the budget for that. It wasn't nearly a million and a half dollars to renovate the website.
I think we heard about that from some of our candidates, talking too about the websites and upgrades.
And putting out more information.
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, absolutely.
Yeah. Okay, that was my new business.
Chief? Nadine?
What's that?
Okay, old business. Uh, first, review liquor license fees. Uh, I added this back, because this was a question from, I think it was Tucker's Restaurant that asked about that, and we were going to, supposed to survey what those fees were from other area communities.
I was going to ask too, did we finish reviewing it all, the liquor licenses?
I asked that last week, that's why it's there.
Yeah.
I think Lisa was gonna follow through with that and get us some information.
Okay, I will follow up with Lisa on that. Second, appointment process and status. Um, I started to work on this last week. Um, with appointment season rapidly approaching for appointments that end July first. Um, we should once again put back the portal. Folks that want to submit a letter of interest that are interested to be, to continue for continued appointment, yeah, I saw that there was.
In my drawer, the letters from people for reappointment.
Already.
Already. Not all of them, some.
We just have, I think.
I haven't checked to see who's outstanding on this, but I think Lisa has already contacted everybody once.
I had a nice long conversation with Lisa on Thursday morning about this, because I want to make sure that we do we have some improvements to make from last year, but last year the process was pretty good. I want to re, re-put the portal back for folks that are interested that want to serve on a board or commission in the town of Southwick. If you are already on a board or commissioned on the town of Southwick, it's in our handbook that we have. We can, we can vote as a board to make an, a, a reappointment without an interview and not have to drag everybody back in front of the select board, you know, if there's four people on a board and there's four people interested that are all members that want to be reappointed, great, we can, we can continue on, but if we have a significant number of folks that want to be on, and I think we owe it to the people of the town of Southwick to go through that process, so.
People, new people we don't know.
Yeah.
Have them commit an interview.
Correct.
That was the idea.
But, you know, and I, I said it for a few years now, there's no right or assumption of reappointment.
Mm hmm.
We, we have to go through that process, and I know some folks already sent in, there was a bunch on a proposed agenda, and I'm like, wait a minute, it's not even June yet. We gotta get to, you know, last year we were a little late, like, we were into September, but I think we, we have to post on our website and via this board, and maybe we even carry it as an action item on our next agenda here, not just appointment process and status, that you know, carry it under an action item for next week, that we are going to open the portal on this date. And, you know, folks interested to serving on a board or commission in the town of Southwick should, you know, submit a, on the portal, it's got a place to attach your resume and any other pertinent information you want to do it. And then we're gonna close it on whatever date that is, and then we can schedule it, you know, schedule interviews, schedule discussion, however the board wants to proceed from there.
It isn't technically closed, anybody can go in throughout the year and post.
Correct.
And I was gonna go look and see if anybody put anything.
I also wanted to ask, well, we're talking about the website. I know, like, the schools, uh, several towns, I believe we do as well, with the update. Uh, you can sign in to be notified.
Yep.
So that would be something I would look to see, we should probably look, I think we should look to do. You know, a, a notice goes out around this time of the year, so people that are interested as well.
Sure.
As well, as it goes on top of the.
Well, I think if people sign up for our page, we'll get that automatically, but.
Well, they get a response that they applied, I think you're saying they can sign, let, let them sign up for the agendas.
Right.
To get a notification if we put a posting out that says new appointments.
Some, but maybe we can put that as an agenda appointment on the website with a ca, I don't know how it would work.
I don't either.
You know, maybe we have to put a meeting.
The reason I brought it up is because not everybody reads the whole.
Well, you know what, the pla, you know, the planning board does this. They have a meeting at seven o'clock every couple of Tuesdays, right? They have a public hearing, they have a separate line item on their agenda that gets booked on the calendar at seven thirty. Well, maybe we have a six oh five agenda appointment that says committee appointments, that way everyone who signed up for anything from the Board of Selectmen is gonna get that notice separate from our regular meeting agenda. Follow?
Gotcha.
Mm hmm.
At least that's one way to do it. I don't know if there's other ways to do it.
I mean, that tells them that we will be doing appointments.
Correct, so if you're interested to apply.
To let them know that we're taking applications for new ones.
Yeah, that, you know, the board and appointment season is coming, if you're interested, you have until this date.
So it'd be a six oh five appointment to announce it.
To it, exactly, just to say, look, we're gonna do this, and then, yeah, please apply by June something or whatever, get it in.
Because that's one of the things.
You're right, if anyone applied, because we, we have to put a line in the sand, not that it closes the portal.
Yep.
But if someone applies the night of our meeting, we're not organized, right?
Yeah.
We should have that date, and I, I did look in there, um, things got moved around a little bit, so I've got to go back and find where they went. I have the database of when we got it, when we closed it up, the cut off date last year, I have to look at what came in after.
And I was gonna do that too, okay.
But uh, a couple of things got moved around, and then I was gonna move forward with that from there.
All right, but we're gonna take these as an application, we're not gonna force people to go put it into.
Of course not, no, absolutely, we're.
It's either or.
And last year, we put them into the portal for them, so that we had the record in the portal.
I can just tag that, that, uh, just, yeah.
Just like we did last year.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Got it. So I'll do that with beans.
C O A Director, internal posting. The job has been reposted for, and it's been posted outside the town as well.
And we had a deadline on that one too, like, the last one, when was that? There was one, we don't have a deadline on that, so. Oh, there's that though. Oh, okay.
H S I C, oh, Inglep, so I can use abbreviations, H S I C I M A for Westfield Gas and Electric, we're meeting tomorrow. Marijuana dispensary webpage posting, H C A process and template R F I evaluation and scoring. I think you're all set to go, right?
I.
I would like to.
Think you all need to just say, go.
I would like to make a motion to move this forward and go.
You all read it.
Start accepting applications and do the review process.
You want a second to motion then?
Second.
Doug Mogul, I.
Jason, I.
Dan, go I.
Okay, I did send some dates to Lisa this afternoon on the next item for the chapter sixty-one, for the week of June, the, I want to say June's not on there, I think it's June third and the tenth, week of, either Tuesday or Thursday, that week. Uh, Lisa's gonna reach out to board and committee chairs to see what works for them. T-Mobile hometown grants, I believe I emailed you the one from Long Meadow.
Yes, you did, exactly, Northampton, I believe it was, which was surprising, I thought, isn't it Northampton?
I don't believe everything I read, it could have been Northampton, thought it said Long Meadow.
I did, I spoke with Carrot this week, uh, and, uh, he's actually, I believe you might know this gentleman, Mister Shield. Um, we haven't heard back from him regarding what it's gonna take as far as equipment and whatnot. So that's.
If I run into him, I'll mention.
I believe he was on vacation, that was told at one point, so.
It was Northampton, I stand corrected. Okay. Town clerk, internal posting done, two applicants to interview, applicants interviewed. Discussion.
Let's rewind to the beginning.
Lost, I kept a separate pile over here.
That was smart.
Yeah, you can't make one of the firefighters the clerk. That would be bad for them.
As far as discussion, this is probably gonna be what, the hardest decision to make, I've honestly since I've been on this board, as far as, uh, these two candidates are so equally qualified and qualified. I, I don't, I, I, I don't know which way to go right now, personally.
I believe that although the town experience is, is great on both parts. I believe Polly has more of the relevant experience in the thick of the job. In the town treasurer clerk collector, she has experienced a lot of the juggling that is still gonna be required. As far as the certification, um, she's already partway there. She gets points for her education and her work experience, which gets her there faster on the certification. Um, and that is where I'm leaning. She was a little more nervous, I think.
Well, we're such a scary.
I know, I know.
Explain to me how the education factors into into the clerk certification?
Second. Uh, on the point system, fifty points needed uh, in order to take the exam, ten points for an associate's degree, fifteen points for a bachelor's degree. So she already has fifteen points. Ten points for an associate's degree, fifteen points for a bachelor's degree. So she already has fifteen points. I doubt you can stack them, but you may. Maybe she has twenty-five, cause she got an associate's and a bachelor's. Uh, Town Clerk experience as well. She would have two and a half points per year as an assistant. Per year. So the outside education and inside track. She's got a head start.
I'm still torn.
A- and also knows the staff she might be working with. You know, some of those are gonna go to that position as well. So already has relationship with those people.
So it's a, back to my original question a little bit, so it's a five-point delta between an associate's and a bachelor's degree and in the overall scheme of things here?
Yes. Yes.
And what are the points?
Again, unless you can stack them, I don't know.
What are the points for time served?
Points per year as.
I'm sorry.
Two and a half points per year.
I'm gonna assume, based on my knowledge of degrees and what the state puts up, you all usually are, you're usually not able to stack them, so. It'll probably be the fifteen.
I don't know, like, again, I don't know if an associate's degree in veterinary science counts. I don't know. It doesn't.
It doesn't say.
Doesn't say that here.
It just says degree, then unless it's.
You know, you get points for business school. I would assume it would be business oriented. Accounting oriented, tax oriented, or municipal oriented. And I don't know what Christine's was, what wasn't.
Associates.
In that.
Professional pastry and baking. She's also now a qualified firefighter.
And Holly's done more of the actual tasks. Throughout the voting process, seen more of it, worked through more of it. I believe.
Well, I think. Oh, I think that. Well, we're certainly lucky that we have two really good candidates. By the way, live right up the block from each other.
Um, yeah.
Um. Yeah, one. One applicant's been with us since March of twenty twenty-one. In the, in the Town Treasurer Collector Clerk's office, so, you know. I keep forgetting we're already in twenty twenty-four, so three years here. It's quite fast, isn't it? And then the other person, um. Did just over a year in the clerk treasurer collector's office before moving into the DPW office for a decade. Um, it'll be a decade in September.
It's one of the ones where you want to give both of them the job.
Well, the good news is in the Town of Southwick, the the way the conga line moves is that it it ends up working out in the end. Honestly. I know them both. They're both very, very nice people. They're both very, very capable of doing this job. I think they both will have. A a a bright future with the Town of Southwick, no matter what happens. Uh, at the moment, my opinion's slightly different than yours, but, um, I don't want to put you on the spot, because I've. Oh, I'm trying not to, so, um, like I said, it's always been my. As the chair, it's kind of my my job, I think, to facilitate the discussion, not to take the pressure off. I would gladly put forth a motion if if you feel it's warrant to make, and then, and then see which one gets a second. And then we go from there to a vote, um, but. That's my opinion on this so far. There's both of these have, you know, this has a long road to go to get to be the town clerk. And, you know, whatever happens where for the rest of the office or other offices in the town, there's gonna be. Just the way that things are working out.
I'm confident enough to make a motion.
You're right.
I'm gonna make a motion to appoint Holly.
All right, so I'll put you on the spot then. I'll also set forth a motion to, for Christie my. So there needs to be a second to one or both, one of those motions, and then the other motion would die for lack of a second, and then we would move. The good news is you don't have to do this on a lieutenant's job.
No, I don't. It's all on you guys.
I hear you.
That would probably cause some problems either way. I am gonna second Mr. Moglen's motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there a, um, second to motions, can you?
I don't think so.
Okay, so then there would be a roll, call, vote. So there's a motion made and seconded. Then it would be a roll, call, vote. Doug Moglen, yes.
Jason Peron, yes.
Thank you, I know.
Very well. That is our vote. So we're gonna, we have subject to the additatives and the, and the whatever. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And I hate making this.
Okay. Now, start concerning things, but I have to get with Doherty on the master plan. Chair sent back discussions. I have to have a discussion with Mike. I have not had a chance. Uh, any other old business, Mr. Peron?
I do not have anything that comes to mind at the moment.
Yes, I do. Sort of, it's old, old business revisited the, um, business jury. Who came to us with a appeal for her doc. We worked out an arrangement with conservation. Finally gave her a, an exception for a disability. Uh, her doc was put in this week. She checked it out. It's where it's supposed to be in accordance to the agreement. However, it brought forth the void in the agreement for this kind of accommodation. So I would like to send, and I talked to the chief on this, I would like to send a. Request for amendment to the LPP document to allow for such, and this is in red, what I am proposing. Steve already saw that, but there's copy from him with the cover letter, uh, to send to conservation for them to consider these changes. And incorporate them after legal coun- if they entertain it, for legal counsel to check it and then have them incorporate it. And there's references to the rest of CMR three hundred nine dot dot law. That calls for this to happen. So I'm looking for your approval to forward that.
Jake, Moglen?
One thing that, after the meeting, I'm thinking about it some more, and you just brought up another point. I know we're talking to conservation for the LPP people when approving these permits, sometimes. You'll have a not compliant or non-conforming location, but that if butters don't argue to. Generally, conservation or the LPP program will permit that said doc. Probably maybe there should be something in here for those instances where the butters sign or require the application process.
Sign the.
They, I guess, permit. The permit, so maybe, you know, that could be something in addition to what what you're.
Beyond the scope of this, this is more of an HC accommodation, right?
But I. Well, not necessarily. If you look, it explains hardship, and it does get into some things outside of handicap.
Um, such as the accessible waterfront, doesn't necessarily.
You know, and and we have some of those, some of these areas that are very, very narrow, um. And, uh, but the butters had no problem as long as they're not navigational issues, um, with a doc being in a particular location.
I I don't think that is necessarily a requirement for. A disability accommodation, because if the neighbors say no, that's no reason not to.
No, that that is totally separate, you know, but but what I'm getting at is that this does cover a little more than just hardship, right? I mean, it does cover the hardship, but then it gets into, you know, what is a hardship and.
Accessible part.
Yeah, um. And even maybe not into this area that you you drafted.
Accessible, by accessible, I meant usable. Cause, cause some of it also can't be torn apart to put a dock, because conservation wouldn't let you take down all the trees. On that waterfront either, that's, so maybe accessible here is a is a different word.
Okay.
A attainable or approachable or useful.
Yeah, and I would say like usable or along that lines, not necessarily, or functional, they gotta be careful of the accessible, or.
But I mean, they already have that soft thing about, um, you know, if the neighbors don't complain.
It, but it's, there's nothing, if, I guess. I think the neighbor, I think because that way we're not arbitrarily going, or they're not through their permitting program. That, you know, this person here is not allowed to do it, but yet across, you know, five rows down, they are, because the neighbors are saying yes. Well, are they saying, you know, I mean, huh, it's kind of a weird standard.
I think that you can go back to the. I, my opinion is I like to see the support of the entire select board to this, and I, from what I read, I think it's fine. And to let them have a debate on the merits of, and including what the harbor master is proposing. Um, because it's their swim lane, like the LPP is theirs, and I I will commend you, I I watched that select board meeting and. Kudos to you, A, for keeping your career way better than I would have, and B, for being an advocate for, um. The young lady who came in front of us a couple of times and and clearly had a hardship in the the the.
You know, it shouldn't happen again.
So to follow through is even better, um. So I'd ask for a motion to amend this to be from the select board and you as the lead on this. Um, as it states, but you have, I think you would have the full support of the select board, right?
For Dan Harbor and Master, I recommend.
We could all sign.
Is that okay?
Yep, I think we'd all sign it.
Okay.
What, did you, regarding what the chief said about the M P D?
Wait, she's got to make an amendment to the.
Me paragraph you want to throw in there?
Something, I mean, I think it would be, my recommendation is let LPP come up with the language.
Correct.
But they know what, they know what they allow.
So just another paragraph that perhaps you should also investigate the soft rule and.
Yeah, cause it's an unwritten.
Yeah, like a clear definition.
This found a problem. We were able to get to a solution for this one, but here's how you eliminate the issue going forward, so we don't end up.
I'll work with the chief, we'll get that paragraph in.
So you have that motion with.
And I'll second it.
Okay.
We'll call vote, Doug Moglen, I.
Jason Peron, I.
Thank you.
Great. And like, once again, thank you.
Mr. Chin, this brought to my attention, when we started talking about the LPP, I do have an appointment. With Mr. Mole, on, uh, I gotta get with Mr. Reynolds and Mr. Cheever, uh, next Monday at ten AM at the, at his office.
Cool. Any other old business?
Not for me.
None for me.
Okay, uh, we covered that, we'll cover that. Uh, FYI, did send a letter to Senator Warren's office. They called me back. Um, very nice gentleman I spoke to, and that was in regards to the Safer Grant for the Southwick Fire Department. There was an article that was in the paper. I had received your permission at a previous meeting to send a strongly worded letter to the Senator in support of our grant. Um, we also received, I requested and received a letter of support from Senator Marks and Representative Baldiga. Uh, for a municipal fiber network community compact grant application that was submitted. The grant we submitted was in the amount of half a million dollars, um, which is double the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a single committee. A single community can receive, because we were able to submit that grant. Along with the Southwick, Tallin, Granville Regional School District, because the district. The school buildings would be part of the mini fiber network, so that enabled us to double up on our grant application. Cross your fingers. And I was, I was glad to receive the, a letter of support from Senator Marks and Representative Baldiga. To include as an attachment to our grant application that was due on the twelfth. Um. I want to send a note to, or an email to the building inspector. I'm noticing that once again, non-campaign related. But the signs are mushrooming again.
They are.
Crazy. Oh, man, you know, the gutter cleaning, the whatevers, whatevers. Well, you know, I saw a couple of those, but that guy actually had a dumpster in front of his house, so that site was okay, one of them. But there's plenty of other ones around town. Kyle Scott did a great job last year, kinda, and DPW, when, when, when asked to go around and just start. If you see them, pick them up, um, cause they're illegal, they're on town property, they don't belong there. Um, and I had a couple of people call me as well, so I figured I'd bring it up here again, so. Uh, if you're putting out signs or just don't waste your money, they're just gonna get picked up and tossed. Um, I did see an email speaking of conservation. I think we need to bring this back up to this board. And either we send a, a note or something like that, but last, part of the North Pond. Deal last year was that they were having a lot of problems with the rope swings and so on and so forth, and there was a study done or. An, I don't know if it's Arborist or a tree company had come in and identified several diseased, dying, ill trees that were. Being used as rope swings, which created a bit of hazard. There was some funding, a so- a funding source was made available. And then by a vote of the, uh, that organization, they rescinded that funding. And I think the conservation hasn't acted on it since. I saw your email. Um, I think we should continue to press them. It's their, they're the. The caretakers of that land. That being said, um, I think we should ask them to take action on what they had said they were gonna do. And identify the funding source in order to make that happen. So that's just my opinion, but I wanted to bring it back to you, because it was something that was, last year was a concern. You, you, they couldn't cut the rope swings down fast enough, so they decided to take the trees down. Then they decided, you know, the, the, uh, the board withdrew their funding after a bit of public upheaval. But I think there needs to be discussed, because it's, it's a problem, and it's gonna be a problem in a matter of weeks again, so. Is it okay to send them a note?
Yes.
Dope gate. It's all I had for old business. Wait, uh, any other business before the board tonight, before we move into exec session?
Yep.
Okay. We are gonna go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty A. Section twenty-one, two and three, and Chapter two fourteen, one B, Labor Council. Litigation matters and strategy for collective bargaining with police union. Buyer I A F F, DPW, non-union staff and clerk, UPSU. And we're gonna move to go into executive session and conduct collective bargaining sessions with non-union personnel and. To not reconvene an open session. Move to go into executive session to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel and to not reconvene an open session. And I'm going to declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body and not reconvene an open session. Move to go into executive session, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, and that the chair move to go into executive session to conduct strategy sessions. Move to go into executive session, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and that the chair moved to go into executive session to conduct strategy sessions. In preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. And not reconvene an open session and move to go into executive session, discuss strategy with respect to litigation. As chair declared, an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the body and not reconvene an open session. And a person shall have a right against unreasonable, substantial or serious interference with their privacy. The Superior Court shall have jurisdiction and equity when enforce such right and in connection therewith to award damages. Doug Moglen, I.
Thank you, Eli.
Like two out of three. Okay.